Ten now. Okay. Douglas has asked to bring item number three forward. Mr. Rappley, do you see a problem with that as far as what the way your presentation goes and everything?
No, Mayor, I have no issue or problem with that.
Then we will move item number three forward. Thank you. Okay, we're moving, we're holding on number two. We're moving towards item number three forward with his discussion and possible action of ordinance number 20181217A to amend the FY 2019 budget in administrative department in order to expand the administrative assistant finance clerk position until September the 30th, 2019, to ensure essential city services for the city of Castle Hills and continuation of the passport acceptance office until, and assuming until that date, is that correct, Douglas? Okay, and to that office, okay. We have an item that has just been read. It was item number three under new business. Do I have a motion, please?
So move.
Do I have a second? We have a motion by Ms. McLean and a second by Ms. Scott. Okay, Douglas, would you like to start or would you like for it to start on the other side of the table? Thank you.
I just completed it. As your city secretary for many, many, many years with a interim of a few, which I was not, TML had a meeting to discuss finances for cities. Ours is a small city, a very small city. Our requirements should be very small. But one requirement we absolutely have to have is a significantly qualified finance director. The city's been in turmoil since July of 2017 of not having a finance director, a substantial finance director with substantial background. We have had the last many months, a woman who was basically acting in that capacity but was doing it not as a city employee but basically hourly basis. I thought she was doing a fairly credible job and substantial job. She opted for another position at another city. That doesn't mean that we should not go out, we should go out immediately, find the person, fill the position. Now, since we have already approved an assistant financial director, going out to, is it June, Mr. Rappley?
It's for, it's for six months through the end of June.
Six months. I think, I think that is more than adequate time to discover whether or not that is really needed. If Mr., I offered Mr. Rappley my assistance if he would like because I want to sit there or see at least what's going on for several months to see whether or not that is truly something that is needed in a city our size. We're 4,000 people. We didn't even have it when we were 5,000 people. I just don't know. My common sense tells me we don't need it. But I'm willing to give it a shot to see whether we do or not, and that's why we have this thing going out to June. We'll have a qualified finance director at that time for the next four or five months. He or she will show me what she or she is doing and whether or not the load is overbearing and needs an additional help. At that time, I'll report back if the mayor would like. I'll report back to the city and say what my opinion is, whether we really need an additional employee. Now, the finance director so far, and I think this is an underfunded, unfunded position, with benefits, will get $90,939, but the administrative assistance to finance director gets $55,348. To me, these are monies very, at least the director, very well spent. We have had chaos in that office since July 2017. It has basically been brought into reasonably good shape, and I would respectfully suggest that the council pass on this item and return to it in June or July after the already approved assistant finance director and hopefully the new finance director. Well, we have passed on something like that already.
Okay, is Leslie disturbing the council up here?
Point of order, we're off topic.
Excuse me?
Anyway, I'm saying the additional three months is not needed. It's not needed, and you can come back at mid-year as the budget is being projected. And I will be able, I will be still here, I will be able to also give my opinion, strong opinion, whether we need it. At this juncture, I'll give the benefit of the doubt of whether we need it or not to the new person coming in. But I would just say we don't need to go through September. We've already agreed to through July, through June. It's ample time to know whether or not we really need this additional position, which is costing the taxpayer $55,348.
Leslie, go ahead.
Yeah, first of all, it's a finance director, not an assistant finance director. Secondly, we didn't actually approve an assistant for the finance department last time. What happened was, was that Mr. Schnell told us that we could not amend the particular agenda item, which, you know, I actually found kind of strange because we.
She can't hear you.
Well, I'm speaking into the microphone.
Thank you, ma'am.
Can you hear me now?
Let's hold it down. Okay, we took care of it. Thank you so much.
We do not yet have a finance director. What we did last time was temporarily, because we were told that we could not amend the agenda item, which I found strange, Mr. McCormick stated that he was going to come back in January and change that item because of the fact that the only reason that we approved it was because we needed to fund somebody for the passport office. Many things have happened since then that may suggest that we don't need any other position because there are going to be enough people here for the passport office without that. But the idea that you're going to hire a finance director for the first time, and that person is going to have an assistant, believe me, they will always need an assistant because everybody likes to have an assistant and everybody will always claim that they're being overwhelmed. So you have to hire somebody to see if they can do the job on their own, which has always been the case before. If they can't do the job, you have to find somebody else. You don't start that person off with an assistant.
Thank you, Ms. Winger. Ms. McLean?
It's hard for me to come up with something intelligent to say when we shouldn't even be here discussing this tonight. There's such disregard for our employees and lack of consideration for the fact that turnover of employees is such a huge expense for the city that it ends up eating away at the money that you want to use to do streets in the long run. It's my understanding that originally the administrative finance assistant and permit clerk were both proposed by Diane Phile when she was the city manager, and that they started as part-time and that they became full-time. These positions, if you're in the office, you can see that they are always busy. There are stacks and stacks and stacks of checks that have to be signed, and in the 10 years' worth of information that we have regarding what the staffing has looked like, there are so many new federal and state regulations that we have to make sure we comply with that it is very possible that even for a tiny city like ours, that we need that additional check and balance in our finances and in other departments to make sure that we are complying with state and federal laws. I think it is foolish for us not to reinstate these two positions that we're discussing tonight, and it's interesting that my fellow aldermen sitting up here cannot see the value in the human, the people that are working for our city.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. Ms. Scott?
I'm also very annoyed that we've gotten to this point. I, I am around, I have talked with employees of the city. I have observed, I've been here about a year and a half now. I've been around enough to watch and see what's going on in the offices and that the finance director does need an assistant. Two sets of eyes on our books is better than one set of eyes on our books or checks and balances or someone to look after what's going on, and if they notice a mistake, immediately bring it to their attention. So there's a back and forth. There's a checks and balance system when you have a director and you have an assistant who's going over each other's work. One of the problems I have with the fact that this position was only extended until June is the fact that, and after it was extended till June, there was flippant, off-the-cuff remarks made up here about, well, we'll just bring it back and then maybe we'll shorten it, maybe we'll long it, or change it, or change what it is. No stability. So I ask you, who in their right mind is going to apply to take this position that's only be funded for six months now, maybe nine months if it's approved tonight for nine months? When I go out and look for a job, I'm looking for a job that I know I have a little bit of job security. It's longer than six months, it's longer than nine months. I have a job that if I'm doing a good job in that position, they're going to keep me and continue to use me, and I will give my 110 percent. But when I'm not going out and looking for a job that's only going to last six months and then maybe we'll keep you, maybe we won't keep you, maybe we'll hire you and train you, and then there'll be another whim of this sitting council and we'll unfund your position again now that you've gotten here and gotten trained, and money is flying out the door hand over fist and losing employees, retraining employees, re-employees in and out. But my point being is I don't know who in their right mind is going to apply for a position that's only funded for six months.
Hey, hey, everyone, come on. Let's, let's hold it down, please.
So honestly, if it were up to me, this position, we would just go ahead and be funding it through the end of next year and have it for a year to have a full-year funded position of checks and balances, and that would give a year to show whoever wants to double-check that the city manager is doing his job, that he is doing his job, because once again, I think council is also getting their fingers into the everyday running of the city, which is why we have a city manager. That is his job to determine, do we need a finance director, and does that finance director need an assistant? And so far, our city manager that we've trusted and hired is saying, yes, yes, we do. We need that checks and balances, or if something's going on, one or the other can bring it to me. I trust our city manager to do his job. He's telling me we need the position, therefore, I'm trusting him. Otherwise, why did I agree to hire him? Because I voted to hire this man. He's highly educated, and if he's telling us something, I say that he's telling us the truth. I abhor when, to call him a liar. And if you're saying he's not telling us the truth, you're saying he's a liar, then why does he have the job that he does? Don't call him a liar, because he is a good, honest man who's doing a great job. So I'm curious to see if we actually have any applicants for this job, funding it only six months. I'd amend it, fund it for a year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Mr. McCormick, would, do you have any comments, please, sir?
Yes, I think I do. I've got, I'd like to clarify something. There've been a couple of comments made as to what it is that we did last time on this matter and what it is that we're, that's, we're sought to have done this time on this same matter. So I understood, Mr. Schnell, that when we voted on this last time, the comment was that we could always come back and make a change to it, and we voted for both the finance clerk and the passport office for, I think, I thought it was seven months down to July of next year. What did we vote on? Do you remember?
I, I thought it was through June 30 for the, the administrative assistance in the finance department, and I did recommend to the council that you could not take action on an item that was not specifically stated in the agenda at the meeting last Tuesday and that you could only address the administrative assistant finance clerk at that time. The council is, has the ability to take action at a future meeting with a properly worded agenda item to do something else.
So what we voted on last, excuse me, was, will I interrupt someone? What we voted on last time was an extension for, was it six months or seven months for the, for the two?
I, I thought it was a six-month extension to carry it from January 1 to June 30 of 2019. The record will reflect that.
Well, in any case, what we're, what we're arguing about right now is the difference between June and September of next year, is that right? And that's all. I think Mr. Gregory's comment that, that when we have a full-time permanent finance officer, that person is, is best equipped to advise us on whether or not he or she needs an assistant to do this job. So for the time being, I see no point in making a change to this if we're going to have to make another change to it down the way anyway, one way or the other. So that's kind of where I'm at on it.
Ms., Ms. Winger?
Yeah, I don't, I don't agree with that at all, Mr. McCormick, and I think that, you know, the story that you related some months ago contradicts what you just said because Mr. Rappley has never had a finance director. It is not up to the department heads to decide whether they need another assistant. That's up to the council. We are supposed to control the budget and how it's spent. It's not supposed to be up to somebody there. That has to be brought to the council, and it has to be justified, and the council has to make that decision. Now, the council may agree or disagree. You and I may agree or disagree. That's not the point. The point is to say in advance that somebody who isn't even working here yet is going to have an assistant in advance or even get to know in advance that they can get an assistant if they want it. Well, as you pointed out, everybody will want an assistant. This is the problem. This is what everybody was complaining about here, is that we have this proliferation of assistants. Thank you.
That's exactly so. If I may respond, Mr. Mayor?
Of course.
The, the problem is that at the moment, we have no finance officer. We have a finance contractor who is going to be working on the weekends some to keep our accounts reconciled until we get somebody in, at least is what I've been told by Mr. Rappley, that while she is gone, she has given notice, and because she was contractor, she wasn't required to give two weeks. But in any case, Mr. Rappley told me today that she is going to work on the weekends to keep our accounts reconciled until we get to the, the audit, and that we need the, the finance assistant in order for her to be able to do things like payroll and such until we get some full-time permanent finance officer on board who will do that for us. That was, that was the argument that I heard. Now, we'll, I will say that, that with regard to this assist, this finance assistant that we have onboard now, I spoke to Mr. Rappley months ago, as early as October, about the fact that she was not funded in the new budget and that we needed to take action to see if we were going to fund the passport office or the finance office or how we were going to do it and whether or not we wanted to, to put, put her in some other position that would, that she could do part-time because the finance assistant had not been funded in the budget that we approved last summer. Nevertheless, that, that didn't happen. What I discussed with him was the fact that if he needs something like that, the thing to do was to make it, is to make an agenda item, put it before the council, ask for whatever he wanted, and see if he could, if he could provide the, a sufficient argument to get what he asked for. And we did talk about that as early as October. Still and all, it didn't come up until last week, and now we're doing it again. What we did last week, we're doing once, once again. So I can see, I can see the utility for the time being in having a, a finance, an assistant finance officer to help with, with what needs to be done for the time being. I don't know that we need it permanently. I don't know that we'll know we need it permanently until we get somebody in, in the job and see if, if he or she can do the job. So that's, that's kind of where I'm at on those points.
She had her hand up, and then Leslie. Ms. McLean?
Do any of you see the big picture? As of December 31st of this year, actually, as of January 1st of next year, we will not have two of the three people who are assigned to help with passports. That leaves us with one, which puts us out of compliance with the U.S. State Department's requirements to run a passport office. I really am very confused at how you all cannot see the big picture and you cannot see that only funding a position for six or nine months is not feasible. You are not going to find good employees that want to stay in a place with a can't-care-it dangling out there. Maybe I'll have a job, maybe I won't. You are not going to find a full-time, you've got to have a full-time person to run the passport. Yes, you do. It is a requirement of the U.S. State Department that they be a full-time permanent employee of the city, and that we have at least two of them. Excuse me. That there are at least two of them. Why, in this day and age, is someone going to agree to come to a city for a six-month job? You all are out of touch with what it takes to run a family in this current life, in this century. You are so far out of touch with what it takes to maintain good employees and to provide a stable work environment that I am absolutely disgusted that we are having this discussion and that we are flippantly going out and saying to the U.S. government that we have, we have committed to this, that, well, we'll just fund somebody for another six months. Well, maybe we'll fund it after that. I find it absolutely pathetic that we cannot commit to running a good, modern city.
Thank you. Ms., hey, hey, come on. Ms. Winger?
Yeah, Mr. Rappley? I can't see, okay. Have you?
I'm here.
Have you decided who you're hiring to be your administrative assistant yet?
No, I'm actually putting that out for tomorrow to post for the position since Ms. Thielen is leaving on Friday.
So is there a possibility that you're going to hire somebody who already works here?
Again, I have to post the position. I could, I could fill it with an interim, but I still have to go through the process of hiring that person.
Okay, well, of course, and that was the point that I think Mr. McCormick was making at the last meeting, was that you, you know, he was trying to give you the ability to hire interims, and everybody objected to that, but as long as you understand that, that's fine. I think that we need to find out who that person is going to be before we move forward. That's something that you should be able to decide, and also, you should be able to find a finance director. Have you interviewed anybody yet or not?
Mayor, can I start backwards?
I think we ought to stop grilling the city manager and just tell him, no, she hasn't.
Hold on, Mayor, Mayor.
He's already told you that he's going to put it in there.
Mayor, please let me speak. Let me tell you as city manager what I plan to do, and I'll respond to Ms. Winger. And Ms. Winger, even going back during the budget meetings, the two people in this position did a good job. They've done a great job. The workload is there for both of these positions. These weren't implemented by me as city manager. They were put in place by two previous city managers who said through two budget processes, these positions were warranted and justified, and the workload was there. The permit clerk can't take on all duties with the administrative assistant. This is why Ms. Thielen is leaving. We're losing the cornerstone and rock of this organization here, and her institutional knowledge is a result of her being overwhelmed by trying to manage permits and inspections and her other duties as administrative assistant. Again, I'm going back that I didn't recommend these positions to be removed. I am saying as city manager, they are warranted positions, the workload's there, and they need to be budgeted efficiently.
Yes, thank you for answering that.
Ma'am, as far as the finance director, I had all intentions of hiring our financial consultant. She had excellent, I mean, 20 years of financial, I mean, experience and oversight and being financial director of other cities. What she came in and saw and assessed our current fiscal policies and how we were managing was, was almost a nightmare to her, but she turned it around, and I would have hired her because, yes, I did receive applications, but no, I've actually had to repost the position because the hiring freeze was lifted last week. I had all intentions of hiring her months ago, but first council imposed that I had to bring her forward as a department head to have her selected, and then I had a hiring freeze placed on me. So we lost a very good person who would have been very valuable to, I mean, she would have determined and helped understand that there was fiscal policies that need to be done. I've already had these conversations with Councilman Gregory on necessary policies and improvements in our fiscal manners moving forward, and to improve our expenditures, to look for different ways to be more efficient in those expenditures, monitoring the budget. All of those things encompass the finance director. Reconciling is so important. Well, at the end of the day, I'm now posted the position as of Friday, and so I'm accepting applications again. You know, to find a permanent position may take 60 to 90 days, but at the end of the day, our internal functions for accounting must continue. Our payroll, our accounts payables, we can't get behind on those. I mean, they're so vital, and the workload is there. I see it every day through the permit clerk and the administrative finance clerk. I am here every day, and I see the workload, and it is warranted. If I didn't think so, if I didn't think they were doing a good job, then I would be the first one to say, A, it's not warranted, and B, they're not doing a good job, and I would make them accountable for it.
Well, if that's the case, then you should be able to put the numbers together, which you have not done, to show that to the council. So that was my point.
The numbers are there, Ms. Winger.
No, they're not there, Mr. There are no numbers.
They're dropping permit, doesn't mean.
Mr. Rappley, let me finish.
Ma'am, it's about the process, not the number of permits.
There are no numbers here. I looked through everything, which we did not get in advance, and I did look through everything, and there are no numbers here. The only numbers here are the numbers that we had when we made the decision in the first place, and that has to do with how much we're taking in for permits. It does not say what kind of permits, how much time is spent on each permit, and that's what we're missing. So we don't have that justification.
Well, again, Ms. Winger, it's hard to quantify the time spent on a permit unless you're actually doing the job itself.
But we're discussing the finance clerk. As far as the finance clerk goes, I agree that until you have a finance director, you have to have somebody to do payroll. That goes without saying. The point is, I understood from what you said last time that you were ready, ready to interview people. That's what you said. You told us in the meeting, on the record, that you had already posted, had already received a number of applications that we're going to be interviewing, and now you're saying that you just posted, so I don't understand what's going on.
I had posted the position before the hiring freeze was imposed on me. I took the position down, and I, now that, that the consultant had told me who I was interested in hiring full-time and permanently, I've now reposted as of Friday.
What happened to the original applications you received?
I still have those on file, ma'am, but again, I have to repost.
Hang on, Mr. Rappley. Point of order, yes.
Point of order, the original, the original item is not on the agenda. We kind of need to move on with this. I'm going to call the question.
Yes, sir. Hang on, we have people signed up also. Go ahead.
I, I had a question about this interim position that we approved at the last meeting for six months. Is an interim position considered a full-time employee or a part-time employee?
Technically, it's not interim. It's just extending the position of a full-time person who's currently doing the job in this organization.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that they are a full-time employee of the city so that they would qualify through the Secretary of State's Office of the United States to process passports if that was part of their job description.
On the passport, yes. I mean, again, we currently have three passport agents, and so we're losing two at the end of this year because of the budget, what was done during the budget with the positions.
Right, but, okay, so.
Well, the administrative assistant in public works was, is a passport agent. Administrative assistant in finance clerk is a passport agent, and our municipal court is, clerk is a passport.
Okay, so we're still short.
But I have to say, again, the passport is ancillary to what the day-to-day functions of the finance office that needs to continue and still needs to be maintained internally.
I understand that, and the finances are way more important than that, but I was just wanting to clarify that one part of the job if an interim person was considered a full-time employee. And believe me, I did not mean to anyway belittle the fact that the finances are the most important and handling of those and the double-checking of those.
Ms. Scott and everyone, Mr. McCormick has called the question. We do have two people signed up, so let's make it quick. Discussion is closed on the dais. Let's see, Mr. Frank Paul? Since we haven't stated so far, the agenda items are three, since we have two whole people signed up. The agenda items are, three minutes, Frank, if you could please.
Since I'm the only one, and you often give a little more time, you're welcome to give me more time if you'd like. Douglas, excuse me, Councilman Gregory, you're a joke. You just got here finished saying with, when. You just got here finished saying with, when you decide how the function, you'll get in there and look and see how the function of the assistant clerk is handled. But yet you pulled the trigger on it three months ago, and you didn't know what you were doing. I've asked, uh, Public Works, has anybody been over to Public Works to find out what really goes on over there with Jeanette and the different people and what's needed over? No, we're just going to cut people. You know why we're going to cut people? Because Ms. Winger, two years ago, when she wasn't on council, she passed out in one of her famous writings, "Oh, council hired 10 more people than last year. Oh, council hired six more people." Well, where are they? They aren't here. Now, let me go back to the numbers and what you've done. First of all, I respect our attorneys. They're good people, Mark, I love him. But what you've done with our attorney and if, since we're so austere and need to save money, we've jumped three, four times in our expenses for that. That's the case of this.
Point of order, Ms. Winger, it's off topic.
We need to stay on topic, Frank, please.
Yeah, I'll stay on topic. Uh, so, it was brought up about the, about the fund, because you don't want to hear it something else. I understand, Douglas. Um, let, let's go to the budget. Let's go to this $500,000 that supposedly we save for the streets. Our city manager gave $261,000 in the budget.
How does that, how does that, uh, have to do with this item, Mr. Paul? She just called it point of order.
I'm coming to that because it's part of the budget as far as the item is concerned. Why aren't we doing it? Why aren't we doing it? She's very good at interfering.
Just reel it in, reel it in.
All right, I'm trying to.
Yes, sir.
All right. These three positions, we cut $151,000 a year, period. That's it, not 500,000. So, you add $261,000-
Mayor, it's a point of order, we're not discussing three positions right now.
You add $261,000 to it for the, uh, surplus.
The point of order was called, you're not staying on topic. Uh, this budget item pertains to the assistant finance clerk and the assistant city services of Castle Hills, which is the finance director.
You forgot to bring me on board on the first one. That's what this, I was addressing it.
So, I put it all together. City Services is also in the, uh, item. Okay, go ahead. Let's, let's roll it into the finance clerk, if you can.
Yeah, the finance clerk. Uh, our previous treasurer, finance officer, whatever we call them these days, uh, she wanted that person. Our previous city managers wanted that person. They know what's going on. These people don't know what's going on. They're just shooting from the hip on it. It's important. They really need to know what's going on before they do all this cutting and wheeling and dealing. A city is a, we were $3 million before. Now, we're $7 million. Now, we don't have a computer system. But, you know, it's, I mean, it, it's really sickening. I'll get up here, I guess, and says-
Point of order, we're off topic.
I'll get up here, citizens, and be heard next time, then we'll see about your point of order.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Flynn, did you want to speak on this item? I wasn't sure which one, it was two or three, but we have called for the question. Yeah. Well, what we need to do is we need to, uh, take a look at the item on the agenda and make sure that if you're going to speak, that it's crafted around that item, please. Thank you.
I said we're there.
He no, Mr. Flynn. Johnny, will you, if Ms., Ms. Winger keeps popping off up here, is that a disturbance within the, uh, dais area?
I do, don't think it causes disruption to the meeting, Mayor.
Says what? Verbal utterance, I believe, is the exact thing. I took it as a verbal, uh, utterance. Ms. Winger, that's one. I know you don't care, but it's one. Three, you're out of here. Okay, so let's move on to the next one here, which is Mr. McCormick called for the question. Do we even know at this point what the question is?
Is it not whether or not we should extend this by three months? That's basically item three.
Okay, so we're voting-
Am I correct in that interpretation, Mr. Snaw?
The call to, the, the motion to call the question or to call the previous question is, requires a second, is non-debatable, is non-amendable. So, the presiding officer should ask, is there a second to Mr. McCormick's motion to call the question?
Is there a second to Mr. McCormick? Okay, all right. Take your choice.
Is there?
Yes, there was. It was either one of those three that was at the same time.
All right, so there is no discussion. The vote right now is on whether to close debate and go immediately to a vote on the motion. This is not a vote on the motion. This is a vote on closing debate.
Okay, all in favor of closing the debate and going to the question? It is unanimous. Thank you, council.
You now go immediately to a vote on, I believe it was, uh, Councilwoman McLean's motion to, um, approve the ordinance in question. Ms. McLean, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Mr. Snaw, can I ask for a clarification of what this motion is?
Um, I believe the clarification is that Ms. McLean made a motion to adopt the proposed ordinance listed on the agenda as ordinance number 2018-12-17-A. Ms. McLean, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
That's the motion.
Okay, so the question is called, it's a roll call vote, obviously. So, let's do, Mr. McCormick, how do you vote, sir?
No.
No. Ms. Scott, how do you vote?
Yes. Yes. No.
Okay, the item fails three to two. All right, we're moving on to the next item, which is discussion and possible action on ordinance number 2018-1212 to amend the FY 2019 budget in administrative depart- in the administrative department to extend the permit clerk position until September 30th, 2019, to ensure assist, assist, essential city services of the city of Castle Hills and continuation of the residential and commercial permitting. Mr. Rapley?
Yes, Mayor, again, um, as the other position, I'm bringing forward for, um, extension of nine months, uh, to, uh, fill this position again. Uh, it wasn't my recommendation in the first place. The workload is there. Again, uh, the process is what involves the full-time position and what is needed in that office. And I have not, um, thought anything different. And the position is, uh, is a must in that office. And so, I'm, I'm open to any questions council might have.
Let's get a motion on the table, please.
I'll move. A second.
Okay, we got a motion by Ms. Scott, a second by Ms. McLean. Um, Skip, did you want to start on this one or go the other side? It's up to you.
I'm sorry?
Would you like to start, uh, on questioning?
No.
Uh, or they, start with Douglas, okay. Douglas?
I'll take that hot potato. Now, when this came before the council in 20, I think it was 13 or 14.
15.
Or 15. I was here and I voted for it. And the reason I voted for it is there was laid before the council a clear economic reason to bring per- a person who is assisting somebody who is doing the permit business to make that assistant, uh, full-time. So, as best as I can find, we've never had a full-time position staffed by one person, which is exactly what a small city like ours usually doesn't do. We have cross-training. Cross-training's benefit is, we had a situation just a month, a while back, where one person was sick and one person was on vacation, so they both had to go. So, cross-training for this position was worthless unless it was a third person. And we had always had, in this city, even when we were 5,000 people and not 4,000 like we were on now, we always had massive cross-tr- cross-training so that if somebody was sick and out, because there was always somebody to fill up the space. It wouldn't be for long, but they were knowledgeable enough to do what needed to be done. And if there were any questions, because I've saw this personally myself, if there were any questions, they went to Mike Shands, who was the city manager at that time. And the city manager was fully versed in our ordinances and our permits. And when necessary, Mike Shands was called upon to help somebody when they didn't know exactly what to do. That is one damn good city manager that we had because he was the manager of the city.
Careful.
When the, when I voted for this office, as it turned out, it turned out to be the peak year in revenue. And it's going down ever since. And the projections are that next year will be lower than 2013, two years before we brought on the assistant. And if we look at these numbers that were handed to us, it's really interesting because the numbers go, go back to 2013. Go back to 2016. But even at 2016, the total permits in 2016 was 1,918. The next year, it dropped almost 20% to 1,621. Through November of this year, we're at 1,300. Now, you have a dynamic going on here, and I was willing to, to listen to this again. If we had a situation, whether we're more concerned about the revenues coming in or the permits, then we have to choose which metric we're going to use. If we use the amount of money coming in, the metric of revenue coming in, it's dropping, it's plunging. It's lower than it wa- it will be lower than it was in 2013. If we even go to the number of permits issued, the number of permits issued are substantially lower than two years ago. So, my question is, if the per, number of permits coming in is lower and the revenues are lower than five years ago, is the job load that great? And that raises the question of something we don't have here. What type of permits? Because there are permits and there are permits. There are permits like I had, when I had to have a permit to get my foundation fixed. I doubt that took more than 15 minutes. I don't know. But I, it was not complicated. But they're complicated permits if you're building a house, if you're refurbishing the wood and things like that. So, I'm in a position that I'm not really sure whether, uh, what metric we should look at. If we look at either metric, we sh- there is no real call for a fully funded permit officer. Not only are the number of permits being, uh, issued are down, but the revenue coming in is plunging. So, uh, there is no question that with, uh, two people who have this corporate knowledge or leaving, uh, we need some action to ensure that things try to get as close to normal as possible without busting the budget. And this is important. Mrs. McLean has made the statement tonight, quote, "We need at least two passport acceptance agents." Now, I asked Mrs. McLean twice to have a work plan on this passport office. She didn't give us squat. But what she gave us, and I quote from page eight-
Point of order.
The city needs to be prepared. This is those to the financing of the permit clerk and the financing. It is financing is what I'm talking about. We were told one permit clerk at $40,000. That's what was given in our plan, page eight.
What's that have to do with what we're talking about, Douglas?
Cost. I'd be willing to, I'd be willing to consider-
Frank, be sure and come back up here, because we're talking about cost, okay?
I'd be willing to consider, uh, bringing in somebody with knowledge as an, as a, uh, a temporary person for however long it necessary to school people in the art of doing the permits correctly. It may be one person, it may be two people. And the cost will be paid for somewhere. I think, I think it is absolutely imperative that we get at least three people in the admin office to cross-train to where they know this position well. Whether we're here or not, five years from now, it should always be three people. 10 years, it should be three people. It had been three people prior to 2014. So, uh, we're lacking two people. I think what, I would absolutely go out and get at least two people to be, uh, trained or to at least help in the issuance of permits while the three permanent, the three people within the city, uh, learn the business completely. So, I'm in favor of bringing in people to assist the permit office while we train other people. To hire somebody completely without cross-training, that doesn't get you where you want to go.
Yeah, I, I think I agree with most of what Mr. Gregory said. Um, the point is that when we had 5,000 people here, we still had a lot of empty lots and there were still houses being built. That is no longer the case. So, we don't have the kind of permits any longer than we, today, that we had then that took the ki- that kind of time. And we don't have the evidence before us because it hasn't been presented to show us exactly what these permits are and how long they take. Now, if Mr. Rapley wants to put that together and bring it forward, you know, to convince us subsequently, but we don't have the information today to justify a vote on this. You know, I think I basically, I basically spoke on this issue before, so I don't really need to belabor it.
Ms. McLean?
First, I would like to address, um, Douglas's comment. Absolutely. In the passport business plan that was put together, we were talking about one potentially, eventually, one full-time employee that did nothing but passports. What the State Department requires is that you have at least two people who are trained. And that has always been the case, and that's always what I've argued. I was not asking for two full-time employees for the passport office because it doesn't sustain that right now. That's foolish. That would be completely foolish. But we have to have at least two people who are trained in that area. They don't have to have the title of passport acceptance clerk. They can have multiple of other jobs, just like we have now, with one being the assistant finance, one being a court clerk, and one being the assistant in public works. So, that should clarify, bringing that point to the table. What we have in our city, we may not have a lot of vacant land for construction, but we have a lot of redos. And I don't know if other members of council have paid attention, but as, as young families have moved in and as the houses have turned over, people are doing extensive redos down to the studs. They are ripping the insides of the houses apart, and they are redoing them and making them new vital structures. And, and that type of work requires permits and other things, just like new construction was, would. Um, to talk with Ms. Tu- um, to address Mr. Gregory's comment that, that the revenue is plunging, I happened to bring my 2019 budget notebook with me. And, um, just for permits and inspections, the permit clerk also deals with food licenses, they deal with liquor licenses, they deal with so many other things. They deal with, with dog licenses, they deal with all sorts of things. But just addressing permits, the audited amount that was brought in in 2013 was over 300,000. It was $300,097.23. 2014, it was $246,982.79. In 2015, it was $281,823.12. In 2016, it was $391,212.36. The audited numbers for 2017, $291,200, 291,265.94. It's projected, the numbers that we were given tonight included, um, licenses and permits, and it's, through November was 310,000. So, I don't really know where plunging comes from when we've gone 281,000, 391,000, 291,000, 300,000. All of these numbers seem, they never get below 240,000. And to me, that is a huge income stream that is covering a lot of admin expenses and frees up other money that the city has for the street and drainage work that we all have, have started with the CIP. So, I really don't understand why council would want to jeopardize such a, such a, a good income stream but that also serves the purpose of protecting the health- good income stream, but that also serves the purpose of protecting the health and safety of our residents and our commercial, and our businesses in the city. Permits squarely, the purpose of them is to, um, enforce our, our, our ordinances and to make, make sure that we are maintaining, um, the health and safety of our community. And so those are the comments that I have to sort of clarify some of the arguments that have been made.
Ms. Scott?
Yes, I'm trying to figure out exactly where to start here because, um, there are a lot of permits in the city. If you look under the municipal code for Castle Hills, permits are, in our codes, the word permit shows up 209 times. So, and under our ordinance, the word permit shows up 42 times. So there's a lot of permits that happen and are required within the city. And if you've lived here a while, you understand how many permits are required. This year so far, we've had 1,300 permits, which breaks down to 120 permits a month, approximately four a day coming in. It may need you, you may need to get your dog a license because you just got a dog and you got its rabies shots. Or you might be doing foundation repair, like Mr. Gregory said, he had foundation repair done, and that wasn't complicated, he just turned in a permit. However, he may have just turned in a permit, but the amount of work that went into that permit, that there was significant foundation repair, um, I can go into a little bit because two weeks ago, I did a ride along with our building inspector because I wanted to see how the permit process worked when it was dealing with actual construction permits, which are not simple. They are not easy. When I showed up to meet with our building inspector, he had been given a sheet. It had the six projects on it that we were going to inspect for various things. There were foundations, there was finish out, there were plumbing, there was electrical, there was a new home that was being built from the ground up, actually two, but one kind of snuck in as a remodel that turned into new construction. And that's one thing that I don't think we realize, that there may not be quote unquote a lot that's being built up as new construction, but people are buying these homes and they are basically tearing them down under the quote unquote, "I'm going to just remodel this home," but really, they just tear it down to the ground and rebuild it as new construction. So when you're inspecting it and the permits that are going into the process are the same as new construction. That process that I was involved in, and this was dealing with what was going on in the permitting office, was about five hours that day of permits for about six, I think we saw seven or eight because I asked about different projects that were going on. But you have to go, it has to be inspected, it either passes or it doesn't pass. All of that comes back into the office, office is entered into the computer. One of the new constructions we saw dealt with temporary electrical going to it. So when it passed, came back to our permit clerk, who at the time was Ms. Thalen, who was doing administrative duties and permits. She was so overwhelmed that she'd had to change the phones that day to say, "If you're calling concerning a permit, I will check this phone at 4 o'clock this afternoon and I will return your calls after that time. So more than likely, I will not be returning your call until closer to 5:00 p.m., but go ahead and leave me a message." That is how busy it was going that particular day in the office. And I asked, "Was it getting busier? Were you able to take more calls?" No, they were all having to go to the answering machine to be called back later after 4:00 p.m., which I know if it were my remodel, I'd be a little frustrated if I were calling to get inspection and having to wait on that. But looking at the numbers, the money coming in, um, the, this year so far to date, total licenses, and that's liquor license and food licenses and permits are sitting at 310,000 dollars. The fees collected are at 241,440 dollars and 31 cents to date through the end of November, so that's not including this month. Over the past three years, we have collected over $950,000 in fees in the past three years on permits. So if that is not a job that's actually collecting fees and revenue, oh, the total with licenses included is over a million dollars in the past three years have come through the permit office itself. It is a complicated job. Some permits are easy, but the ones that aren't, they aren't. And the one thing we haven't discussed is the ensemble that's coming back online. How many permits is it going to take for a 300 to 400 unit high-rise that are going to be coming in through that office? And how many times are they going to have to go out and check electrical, plumbing, foundation, finish out? We had one commercial building that did not complete their finish out because they were missing one strip of carpet. Therefore, they did not pass, and that had to be rescheduled for another day. That was a lot of phone calls right there for a missing strip of carpet. So when you say permits are quick and easy, they are not quick and easy. And I would challenge each and every one of my fellow council members, if you don't bel, if you don't believe me, schedule a ride along with our building inspector, or health inspector, or any of our inspectors. Go ahead and do a ride along and see exactly what goes into this process, because I thought it was a lot easier than it is, but it is not. This is a position that brings in money, it brings in revenue stream, and I'm asking, if we follow Mr. Gregory's advice of cross-training, so we have multiple people doing permit clerk work, who are we going to cross-train? Are we expecting that we have the city manager, we'll have a city secretary, and we'll have an administrate, someone in administration? Well, that's three people right there. So all three of them should be able to handle permits, I guess is what he's saying, and the finance director. Okay, so that's four people, so at least three should be trained as permit clerks, but they also have other work to do. Our city managers managing the city. Our city secretary is supposed to be handling minutes and ordinances and all the laws of the state and everything. And we're going to ask them to cross-train to handle permits when we could just have one person that does permits and they fill in occasionally? I don't know. I think taking a over three-year million-dollar revenue stream and tossing it out the window is just frankly ridiculous.
Thank you. Mr. Uh, hold on, hold on, Mr. McCormick, please.
Just to clarify, Mayor, the staff in the finance office can't do the position because they make deposits.
I understand. What, I was going to explain that in a minute. Ms. McCormick?
I don't think I've got anything else.
Well, I do. Hang on, Leslie. You know, it's, a lot of people have read what I've put out lately, and I'm going to, I'm not, after the little incident that happened up here, I, I'm not going to use those words that I had written down here because it just, it, it's not, you know, i, it just doesn't help anything. But you know, it's sad to sit up here. And you've got, I think everybody, most everybody up here really wants what's best for the city. I really do. I really think that. And it's really sad to go over and over and over all this stuff in a city that we live in and not know, we all know what the figures are up here. And if we don't, then we shouldn't be up here. You know them, I know them, Douglas knows them, we all know, and I don't know why we sit up here and say, "Well, if we don't see this from the city manager, you're not doing your job." The guy has done an excellent job, the best job since Mike Shands was here, in order to bring forward what we need. Does he do it on a, I'll call him up and say, "Ryan, do you," and this does have to do with this item. When, "Ryan, I, I need this." Okay, it takes 48 hours. Do I think he should drop everything that he's doing? Sure, I'm the mayor. But guess what? When we, when we look around and we look at this as a business, okay, forget, forget about the residents for a second, go ahead and call your point of order.
I am calling a point of order because that's not the subject we're on.
Well, it is the subject we're on, which is discuss the ordinance number 2018 budget amendment, permit clerk, right? And the permit clerk is the one that takes in money, so we're talking about cost. Remember that, Douglas? Cost. So we're talking about cost. It does have to do with that.
Mayor, just a point on.
The city manager does have to do with that because he's the one that determines how cost is collected. Okay, so with the, with that, quiet. With that said, when, when we go up there, I'd like to know from the city manager, January 1st, as it stands right now, who's going to be collecting this $329,000 that, that we are taking in from these numbers that we all know exist?
I'll have to pass that on to council tomorrow night, I mean tomorrow.
I want it now. Who?
Well, Mayor, I'm going to have to find somebody who's currently here to, um, redirect them in another position.
Okay, so we've lost the administrative assistant.
Well, Mayor, I'd rather not go into details about any restructuring if these positions are not filled. I'd rather.
I sure wouldn't leave it up to these guys.
Provide city council an update on these matters moving forward because, again, some of the positions I have to post for, and I have to go through the process to, um, see if, and interview those folks. And so again, it's not something I want to get into tonight. I'm asking for these positions, they're warranted, they're justified.
We're ten day.
They're nee, hold on, Mayor, they're needed, and I, again, as city manager in recommending this, I haven't wavered since the budget or before the budget that these positions weren't needed.
Will the city be open on January 1st, Ryan?
Uh, no, Mayor, it's a holiday, but January 2nd, we will be there.
That's a great, that's real funny. Yeah, you got me.
But Mayor, again, you know, I would rather.
Is the city going to be open on January the 2nd, Ryan?
We're going to try our best, Mayor. I think we will.
Try your best.
Yes.
Maybe.
Again, I would provide, uh, you and the rest of the council an update tomorrow depending on how, um, this position moves forward or not.
Okay.
And just to answer Councilman Gregory, uh, when you're looking at the total licenses and permits, my understanding in 2014, these were done by hand. When in-code came in, they combined the permits, whether you have four, five, or six, uh, under one permit, so you couldn't get an accurate count of how many permits were being issued. And so that might not be reflected in these totals. But again, as city manager, I'm recommending this position be maintained, funded, and continued to ensure we have permits conducted here for the city.
It would surprise me that someone who's worked for, been around the city 21 years doesn't know how many permits we have coming through here. So with that said, citizens to be heard. You did. Well, then go ahead.
I just wanted to point out that, um, when we had 5,000 people and through Mike Shands' period as city manager, there were exactly two people in administration. They handled permits, they handled finance. Mike Shands handled the most of finance. He was the, the chief, um, finance officer for the city as well as being the city manager. He was the project manager. And the other people, the city secretary did court, and the, and the permits were handled by the administrative assistant and code compliance. All of those jobs were handled by the city manager and two people. And today, we're saying that with extra people that we still have, we still can't do the job, it's just not credible. You have to try to get people to work. I keep coming back to the example that Mr. McCormick set several months ago, and that is that if you have secretaries who can't work, and he could find one person who could replace five secretaries, that's the kind of people we need to hire, and not people who can't do the job. As far as the health and safety issue is concerned, the residents believe that what that entails is fixing streets and drainage, and that's what they're complaining about, and that's why they're complaining about the growth in the workforce that they don't see any benefit from.
Leslie, I have a question on that. Hold on, Douglas. Would you work for you? Would you work for you? You would? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Douglas, go ahead.
We were admonished by Mrs. McLenn to look at the big picture of things. We just had a situation where the permit clerk was gone and somebody else who was also cross-trained to do permits was on vacation, and we had no one. What we're doing right now continues that tradition of you lose one person, the city shuts down. Now, something is radically wrong with that. Now, we, uh, I don't know, I, I mean, it's wrong in as much as it could happen. Again, we could hire a permit clerk, and he or she could drop dead tomorrow, get sick tomorrow, and then what would we do? We have no big-picture plan. That's why I'm going to suggest an amendment to this motion. A big-picture plan has got to be that we have several people trained to do this job so that if one or two are gone, a third person can pull up the slack. That's, I think that in the, in the long run is probably the big question, because having a permit, every city needs a permit office, it's how many you have running it. And if we have no plan to have any backup, but just hire a permit clerk, we are in worse shape than we were before, because now the city is terribly on the hook to one person. So.
That's where we're at.
I was thinking, and I don't know where it is, the correct time to do it to make an amendment.
Councilman, can I respond to, to that?
No.
To make an amendment to this motion. And Mr. Mayor, where is the correct time or place to make an amendment?
We have a motion, and we have a second on the table, we're on the dais right now, so you to make an amendment is, is okay.
All right, this is my amendment. On section two, discussion and possible action on ordinance number blah, 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 to amend the fiscal 2019 budget in administrative department in order to extend the permit clerk position, and these are the words I want to have followed, "to be filled by two part-time permit clerks for a period ending 30 June 2018." Now, what this does, this gives the city time to bring in people who know what they're doing and to cross-train at least two other people, if we ever eventually get a permanent permit clerk, two other people to be completely knowledgeable of what's going on. So during this time, cross-training should be completed so that, uh, at, at that time, a full-time employee can be covered by that position if necessary. So this is basic, since the permit clerk position wasn't defined by the number of people, I'm simply saying it's to be filled by two part-time permit individuals and to have them there till the 30th of June. And that gives the whole city plenty of time to have two or three other people to be fully understand what's going on.
Under Texas Penal Code 42.05, disrupting a meeting and procession, a person commits an offense if the intent of the prevent or disruption in a lawful meeting, possession or gathering or obstructs or interferes with a meeting, possession or gathering or by physical action or verbal utterance. Would you like to verbal utterance or explain to us why you're verbal uttering?
I am not disrupting the meeting.
You verbally uttered, and I heard it, and there were two people up here that heard it also.
But I did not disrupt the meeting.
Two. Johnny, she will be removed on the third time. Okay, Douglas, will you go along with your motion, please?
My motion to amend this motion after permit clerk position to, it says, "to extend the permit clerk position to be filled by two part-time assistants or permit clerks for a period ending 30 June 2018. During this time, cross-training should be completed so that three full-time employees can cover the position at any time." That solves your solution long-term of what happens when you, you can't rely on one person for a critical position. You must have two or three, and they must be there.
Needs to be second. Do I have a second for Douglas's amendment, please?
I'm going to second it.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Now we're going into discussion. Douglas, did you want to say anything more before Ms. Winger starts?
This is like making sausage, it looks, it looks bad, but this is the, this is the only way we can get from A to C, and to ensure that we have, by the end time we get to C, we have plenty of people fully knowledgeable, fully aware, fully competent to pick up the slack in case two people aren't there. We've done that forever in the city. This is simply coming back to what we've been doing for many, many, many years.
Thank you, Douglas. Ms. Winger?
Mr. Rapley, are you telling us that at this point in time, there is only one person working for the city who knows how to issue permits and that there has been no cross-training?
There has always been cross-training and a backup and redundancy in this position. The current permit clerk is full-time. The administrative to, the assistant to the city manager served as the backup in case that person is out, sick, or not here. The third backup to the position is the administrative assistant in public works. So, we have three areas where someone could fill that office at a moment's notice if someone was out. That's the redundancy and cross-training we have in place. Now, at the end of this week, our administrative assistant to the city manager is leaving. At the end of the year, the administrative assistant for public works is leaving. So, right now, at the end of the year, if this position is not funded, we will not have a permit clerk from that standpoint.
So, let me ask you a question. Do you know how to issue permits? Because other city managers did. Do you?
I have not issued a permit, no, because there's been a full-time permit clerk. I wasn't hired here to do permits, Ms. Winger.
But, but in the, in a pinch, you could issue a permit?
I, I have no problem in doing that from that standpoint. Sure.
Okay. Well, then, there's also another person I have seen issuing permits, and that is the code compliance officer.
In my time here in the last 11 months, I have not seen the code officer there issuing permits. It has always been the permit clerk, the administrative assistant to the city manager, or the administrative assistant to public works.
But he does know how to do it.
Again, I have not checked with him. He's always out on the streets being proactive on the code enforcement side.
My point is that we always have other people here who know how to issue permits, and certainly, the city manager should know how to fill in for anybody if a crisis arrives.
I understand that. And, Ms. Winger, my position as city manager here is to, again, oversee day-to-day, work with our department heads on a number of levels. And issuing a permit, yes, I could do that if I need to, but that has not been my reason and basis for being here for the city of Castle Hills. We've had a permit clerk who's done a great job.
But I'm talking about the fact that if you had a crisis situation, such as Mr. Gregory has described, where suddenly, one or two people who were doing this were not available, in the past, the city manager has always been able to step in. And so, I'm assuming that you can do the same.
Again, I wasn't here when previous city managers were here.
You're not gonna win this. Don't worry about it. Ms. McLean?
So, I just want to reiterate that it's been my understanding that on almost every single task, that permit or anything else in the office, that all, the administrative assistant, the permit clerk, Jeanette comes over from public works, that everybody has been cross-trained. And so, I don't know why there's this thought that council thinks that there hasn't been cross-training. The problem is that, as a result of the actions of council since May, since the election, we have got a catastrophic situation where we will not have anybody in the office. We will have nobody left that is, that is trained, because their last days are there. Mr. Rappley's gonna have to figure out how to handle that. The problem with having two part-time clerks is that does not give us someone who could fill in and work as a passport clerk if we're gonna make sure we stay in compliance with the US State Department. You have to have a full-time permanent position. So, having two part-time clerks to do the job of one full-time person that we have now, while it's a creative way to deal with the solution, it creates a bigger problem and puts less cross-training in our office. Right now, there is a very tight, efficient network of cross-training that everybody catches the ball when somebody else drops it. And that has been compromised by the lack of funding for the finance assistant, for the permit clerk, and for the assistant in public works. The, the structure and the compromise, and, and the cross-training has been compromised by the failure to fund those three positions. And having two part-time clerks is not gonna solve the problem.
I want to bring something up real quick. When we go back, not a single city manager, back to Mr. Shands, has ever filled out a permit up here in the front. And that includes the one you're getting ready to say. She did not.
Yes, she did.
No, she did not.
She did for me, and she did for other people.
Well, maybe she told you she did.
Oh, she didn't tell me. I saw it.
Right. Ms. Scott?
Thank you. I'd like to get back to the topic at hand, which is the amendment to, item number two, which is to amend it to hire two temp, part-time, two part-time permit clerks. I do not think that does justice. And I don't know why everyone up here keeps thinking that people want to find temporary work. By the time you train the two temporary people to do permits, and then they're training other people, the money spent training two temporary people, we've saved nothing that we supposedly have strayed going to streets because we're paying it to train people that are only gonna be here part-time. And these people, I'm not even sure, would want to come here to work part-time. Because who are all these people that want six-month jobs that are temporary? So, my question is, who are you going to find to be a temporary, part-time permit clerk for nine months? I just don't, I don't understand. That's not big-picture thinking. That's not thinking of, I'm getting a job because I need money to bring in every month to support my family. It just does not make sense to me to have two temps when you're gonna have one person do it full-time and cross-train other people within the organization if there are other people within the organization that can be trained. Because as Mr. Rappley made it known, that if they're in finance, they cannot come over and do permits. Is that correct, Mr. Rappley? I did not realize that.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, I say I'm all for cross-training. That's the way it's always been. But the big picture here is so many positions have been cut out of the budget that it leaves fewer people to be cross-trained.
Mr. McCormick?
Well, I agree that we do have a number of people moving into the community. I don't think it is the same kind of, of volume as we had roofs being repaired two years ago. I think on my street right now, there are three vacant homes. That's more than I've seen in any of the past years, past 20 or so years that I lived there. So, I think that's an interesting phenomenon. And there are also a number of new residents there that have come in over the past just very few years. But it's, it's a little slower rate than we're getting, than we got from the roofs. So, while I do think that these people are coming in, we're, we're having a lot of work done. People across the street just remodeled their house, pretty much gutted it and rebuilt the interior. And I know that that requires a lot of permits. But the, the numbers don't, don't show that we're having a big, a big change in permits. It's certainly not an increase, but we're maintaining a certain level of permits. I agree that having part-time clerks doing permits is, is, is a problem. And it is a problem partly because of the turnover cost of new employees. The turnover cost of a part-time employee is just about the same as the turnover cost of a full-time employee. And so, if you're going to put somebody in there, you save a little money by going with one full-time person rather than a part-timer, just because of the turnover cost. The other is that when you have part-time employees, they're part-time because they're in-between jobs, or they're interested, and they're moving on, or they would like to move up. If they find they can't move up, then they'll move on someplace else. So, my thought is that if we're going to put somebody in as a, as a permanent clerk, it needs to be a full-time employee rather than a part-timer, somebody who will be here for a while. Guess that's about all I had to say on that.
Thank you, Skip. Can I say something here, Douglas, just for a second? I think we're missing something here, and this is, it could be right. We're not getting enough flow of people coming into Castle Hills like we used to, although we're getting more than people think. And there's, there's more that are coming. From the business side of it, though, nobody's even mentioned that and what it takes. I had one of our largest businesses in town come up to me Friday and said, "Why can't he open on Friday his new section there?" I'm not gonna tell you what I said. I have more respect for the ladies in here. But I will say this. You know, our businesses, too, put a burden on our, on our permit office, our office, our general thing up there, looking at the plans and things like that. I don't know if council knows that the school of ballet has tripled their size. Expansion of the image salon, 50 more rooms. Now, how many permits you think that takes? New shop, image salon on Northwest Military, they put 50 more rooms in there. Mr. Rappley, would you get with the councilman, please, and explain why permits are being pulled by people who want to expand their businesses, please? New shopping center on 410. The one that I was talking about, and I asked him if I could talk to him to buy, tonight. Sushi Hana, one of our largest restaurants in town, respected in the city. Turned them away Friday night. I don't know, we'll just hire somebody else. Blanco Plaza, up there where, where Denny's is, Picnicins, places like that. We've had two new businesses open there in the past 60 days, which council was invited to. Thanks, everyone who attended that. But the biggest thing is, for a person who owns three businesses or four businesses here in the future, and I talk to these realtors, they're scared to death of Castle Hills. And I'll be glad to tell you the names. I need to ask the permission of them if they would allow me to say their names. But we have three major developers here in town that don't want to even touch this place. And I'll let you guess why. So, those are the people that we have. You know, the residents are the most important. There's no doubt about it. We all live here. I live here, too. But these are supportive. These are what keeps ad valorem's down and keeps, you know, money in our coffers in order to keep things going. When they say, "You've got a crappy town," that hurts. Especially somebody who's lived here as long as I have. Leslie, you want to say something? Go ahead. Go ahead.
First, I want to withdraw my amendment.
Okay. So, we're back?
Well, I, I, I listened to what you had to say. I don't know, you know, the city is more than just the permit clerk. One thing, when we had an employee who's leaving now, talked about the permit clerk. But one thing that was talked about was having, in the course of four or five years, three city managers and two assistant city managers, the big mess we have in the administrative office right now, and to use the quote, crappy insurance, even though it's free. You know, there has to be a good-faith effort to try to make things work as well as you can when you see there's a problem. I think that's been sort of a hit-or-miss thing for a while. Mr. Rappley wants to bring on this clerk through September. I would find difficult to agree with that, but I have another amendment.
Okay.
I would change the date from September 30, 2019, to the end of July 2019. If, if all that passes, there's a reason behind it. We, we had, out of the whole 70-something people living here, three positions were eliminated. Not 50, not 20, not 10. I was told, half the police department's ready to resign, a lot of the fire department's ready to quit. We're shutting down. We're in a disaster mode. This is what I'm being told by responsible people. I'm glad to see the police department is still here, and the fire department is still here, and we're not in a disaster mode. But we've actually added two employees. We now have a person who's gonna come on making 40 grand a year eventually. That's a full-time passport person. And we added somebody else. I forget who it was. Oh, the finance, the assistant finance director. That position will be determined by the new finance director if they can prove, and he said, so what they prove, Mr. Paul says, so what they proved to Douglas. Mr. Paul, I want to be able to make a decision based upon information other than just what I'm being fed by one person or another person. And if Mr. Rappley invites me to take a look at what's going on, I shall. And I will make my opinion noted when it is brought to the city council by the city manager on what he wants to do, and that it is our decision to determine whether to make that a full-time position. But there's been such disarray in this city since the middle of July of last year. Real horrible messes have occurred. Financial messes, personnel problems. They've been, and it's all been because we, a multitude of problems. And I think the council, not just this council, but when you have umpteen councils over the last five years, have three city managers and two assistant city managers. I agree with Mr. Howell. He and I had this conversation some while ago. How do you change that? And I think there's a way. I think we can do it. I voted for this position to be eliminated. I voted for it to be brought on. I am prepared to, if my motion passes through the end of this period of time, to allow it to go forth until the next budget. At that time, I will have, you better have arguments full to bear as to whether or not this is absolutely necessary. And, of course, the council may not agree to my amendment, so that's it. But that is my amendment.
Which is?
To change the date until September 30, 2019, until June 30, 2019.
Okay, the amendment's on the table to change the item from-
September to June.
I'm sorry, Skip.
Line, changes the date in line four of the heading from September 30, 2019, to June 30, 2019.
Yes, sir.
And, Mr. Mayor, it also would change the date in Section 2 of the ordinance?
Yeah, and it's-
To June 30, 2019, and there can be no discussion unless it gets a second.
Do we have a second for this, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Skip. Okay, so it changed from 30th to June 30th. Is that correct, Douglas?
Yes.
Okay. Let's go ahead, and we already know how everybody feels on this. Let's have a vote to see if that amendment sticks. All in favor? All opposed? Amendment fails. Okay. Let's go back to the original, please. Council, I think, has talked about this till everybody's blue in the face. We have two people signed up. We'll start with Mr. Paul. Mr. Paul, you have three minutes, and then if Mr. Flynn would like to give you his three minutes, albeit if not, Mr. Flynn has three minutes.
I apologize. Sometimes with this group, it's a little hard to stay on topic, but any-
This is about, Mr. Paul, this is, just so you know.
Right.
This is about the permit clerk's position.
I understand that. I just apologize for not staying on topic before.
Your apologies accepted, sir.
The permit clerk was, in fact, justified more than once, more than once. Mr. Gregory voted for it, like he said, voted for it in 2015, 16. He didn't vote for it, actually, in '15 because it was, he and Ms. Winger wanted it to be a part-time job. But it did pass three, and for some reason, it never got put on, and we had to do it again in January. I mean, in August. I submit that the crisis that was referred to earlier, the only crisis we've had is in the last six months with that permit office. It's been cross-trained, Ms. Thielen, who we are losing for whatever the reasons. And I doubt seriously it's insurance. I doubt seriously if it's some of the other things that have been commented on, which I can't address, obviously, because it's all- I doubt seriously if it's some of the other things that have been commented on, which I can't address, obviously, because it's off-topic. But I think it's been short-sighted and foolish to not keep the permit clerk. Unfortunately, you're talking six months. You might as well be, forget it, because who's going, I mean, you know, who's going, want to work, come to work and learn something about six months? It is not that easy a job. I've seen the inspectors, I've seen the follow-up, I've seen everything that goes on in that permit clerk. I was up there on council for four years. So, I did ask questions before I made ridiculous decisions. I did ask what went on, I did find out what went on. And, Mr. Mayor, I guess that's all I have to say, but if Mr. Gregory, I've offered two or three times, if he ever wants to sit down and talk about any of this, I'd be more than happy to.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Okay, let's go on to Mr. Flynn, and Mike, would you go ahead, please?
Yeah, Mike Flynn, one eleven Amerson. You guys covered a lot of areas today, and I thought the discussion was very good. I think there are a lot of valid points. I think there may be some apples and oranges comparisons regarding what constitutes a permit, what doesn't. And the metrics, I don't know, but I wonder if the decline in permits may have something to do with less permit enforcement, less code enforcement? I don't know. Value of cross-training is excellent, from what I hear, you've got cross-training. But that's a temporary solution, okay? And if I'm, if there's a shortage, you move that person over who's cross-trained, but who else is going to do that job? Who's going to do their job? Well, if it's a temporary solution, it's not a big deal, but if you don't have a person in that position, and that, and that cross-trained person is now filling that permit position, that other person's job is going undone. Unless, of course, they're doubling up their time and working themselves, and, you know, during a budget, you cut three positions. Since that time, my understanding is, three or four other people are quitting. That is entirely predictable and preventable. And during the budget committee meeting, I warned you folks not to cut the permit position, because that would slow revenue. And I think it has, and that's, that's a, that job pays for itself. And, you know, all this talk about cutting positions, you're talking about an extra two hundred thousand dollars to, to help fund the streets. That's chump change. You've got eleven million dollars in street repair that needs to be done. And I've heard that there's forty to fifty million dollars in drainage problems. So, at five hundred thousand dollars a year, you're looking at a hundred years to address those problems. In the meantime, your infrastructure is going to continue to decay. Now, you talk about temporary positions. We're at a point of almost a hundred percent employment. People are screaming for jobs, for, to get people to fill their jobs. Why would they want to take this on a temporary basis? They wouldn't. And I'm just dumbfounded by some of the discussion that goes on. I'm upset and saddened that it has to get to this. But I want to reiterate that I support our city manager, I don't know who Mr. Shands was, he sounded like a hell of a guy. But I don't know how long he'd been in his position. Mr. Rappley hadn't been here a year yet, give him time. And that's, goes, and, and talk about stupid. I mean, it's clear that some of you people are not business people. I don't know what Mr. Rappley's salary is, I'll say a hundred thousand dollars, just for, for argument. To put him doing a forty thousand dollar a year job, this does not make fiscal sense. You wouldn't have, Mr... My three minutes is up already?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, in closing, I just want to refer you to the sign there, it says, referring to Castle Hills, "When location and service really matters." I don't know who said that, it's in quotes, I don't, maybe it's our motto, but I think it should be revised, like, "When location and service used to matter." Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, so we've got, yes, sir?
Using the logic of Mrs. McLean and Mrs. Scott. I don't think, since they sat here, they've never agreed on anything.
Excuse me, can you use your microphone? Mr. Gregory, if you'd use your microphone, I'd be able to hear you so much better.
Using the logic of Mrs. McLean and Mrs. Scott, when I tried to change this from September to June, at the bequest of the city manager, he had September. If their situation is that they don't think six months make any sense, they would think nine months doesn't make any sense. So, I would think they would vote against this too. Because if six months is no good, nine months is no good, because they've made it very plain and clear, it should be at least a year. Now, this is...
Don't respond to that.
I, I think...
I'm tired of this, we need to get this off the table, okay? Y'all can banter all night long.
I agree, I agree. I just, I...
Go ahead.
I really, by put, I know it lost, but by putting it in June, put it back in the budget process again next year. And we can discuss this fully at the budget process, but no, we have to debate that, no, we, we've got to have it all, or we have nothing. We've got to have a year, we, they're obviously going to vote against September, though, because they want a year. I, I just think, I think there's some people who are not here trying to find a solution. So, anyway, here we are.
I think you said the right thing, Douglas, you know, as a business owner, I take a blowtorch to this thing. Are we online? Everybody hear that? Good.
Mayor.
Mayor said it.
Mayor, in response to Councilman Gregory, the thought was, again, nine months, because we could come back during that budget, budget process and reevaluate, and that's why I was hoping to come with a compromise of nine months. I'd like to see it for the entire year, but that was my thought process in trying to bring this back for council's review.
Go ahead.
Mr. Rappley, you know, I would just like to see that you hire an administrative assistant who can do the job that previous administrative assistants have been able to do. And until you do that, we don't know anything, and you have not given us the figures that I asked for, to show that the time is needed. So, the question of whether, whether the money is there is not the issue. We need that money for other things, because that's what the citizens keep saying, and we have to listen to them.
Thank you, Leslie. Was anybody going to call for the vote?
Vote.
Thank you, Leslie. All right, it's going to be a roll-call vote on item two, which is discussion of possible action on ordinance number two oh one eight one two one seven, to amend the FY two nineteen budget for administrative department to order, to extend the permit clerk position until September thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, to ensure essential city services of the city of Castle Hills, and continuation of the residential and commercial permitting. Mr. McCormick, how do you vote?
I vote, yes, and I'd like to explain my vote, I think I'm entitled to do that, according to the rules of order.
Yes, sir.
The reason that I'm, that I'm voting this way is because we have a problem that we have to resolve. Among those, among those problems are that we have a departing city manager assistant slash permits clerk. We have a public works clerk assistant who's, who's leaving. And we have a, a passport office that we have to keep open. And we need to, at least two people qualify to do that. I know that if, if Nora stays on, she's qualified, we need two, like I said, but we, we will have three. Christina is, is qualified, and then we'll have, if we have, if we have anybody else, they'll, they'll be cross-trained, and it might be the new administrative assistant to the city manager slash permits clerk, for all I know. But we have, we have to have somebody come in who will be here for a while, who can continue to train people. I know we have a part-time volunteer now, helping out in the permits office, and that Kit is training that person. And I commend that citizen for volunteering to assist the permits clerk. But I, I think we need to have somebody here who's, who has been here a while, and will be here for a while more. If, if Kit's going to stay, then she might be that candidate. I don't know what Mr. Rappley has planned. I do have some concern that, that I, I see some failure, and I don't know who to blame for it, but I see some failure to, to weave together some organization out of the chaos that we've had, and to find a way through that to get to someplace useful. I think that this, this decision is made with that in mind, with the idea that this is what I think is best for us to do at the moment, even though I know there are going to be a lot of people who disagree with me. And I know that some of the people that I've spoken to on the phone would disagree with this decision as well. But that's my decision, my vote.
Vote on the roll-call, vote, please.
I vote yes, because why settle for six months when you could get nine through the next budget season? Thank you.
Thank you. And we, remember, we have announcements after this, you can explain why you did something then. Ms. McLean, how do you vote, please?
Yes, I will take our city manager's recommendation on this for now.
Thank you. Ms...
No.
Okay, Douglas?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a four to one to move forward. Next on the agenda is, it passed. The next one on the agenda is announcements by the mayor or city manager. Let's start with you, Mr. McCormick, did you have any announcements?
Yes, I do. I want to address some questions that have come up about the chaotic situation that we're in. The city secretary position is still vacant. It's been vacant for some time, and we've had, I've had, Mr. Gregory and I both have had communications with the city manager about that. One of the things that I learned in those discussions were that TML and various commercial organizations have temps and interim people that they can, that they can provide to a city to help out in circumstances of exactly this sort. Nevertheless, we haven't really replaced these people yet. And we knew that we were, we probably, let's say, and I think we knew when, when the city secretary was placed on administrative leave, that termination was the likely conclusion to that, but nevertheless, we made no overt preparation for replacing her when it became time to do that. Kit gave her notice in the first week of November, and left on November sixteenth, which is a Friday. And at that time, the city manager was aware that Janet was going to be on vacation during the week of Thanksgiving. And nevertheless, during the two-week notice period, there was no cross-training or, or preparation for the permits clerk to be out on Monday, which is why I understand that the permit window was closed on it Monday before Thanksgiving. There was, an employee available in Public Works who could have been trained during those, those two weeks, but wasn't, so we were left kind of short shrift with the permits clerk during Thanksgiving week. Mr. Rappley has made the point that, that the assistant, the administrative assistant for the city manager was overwhelmed, but the things that he lists as, as contributing to her overwhelmingness were things that the city secretary was doing. So, the city, the administrative clerk assistant to the city manager was doing city secretary stuff during that week after Thanksgiving, when we had the big catastrophe in Court Clerk's office, when the passport window, I mean, the, the permit window had to close. And the reason for its closing was that we were doing the agenda for the following week's council meeting, and Janet was busy doing that, and that nobody else had been prepared or trained to fill that slot on that, on that evening, when the court clerks needed the assistance of people in the permits window to take payments for fines and so forth. So, there, there are a lot of things there that, that could have been done and weren't. And it doesn't matter who, who was responsible for them, they just didn't happen. And that makes us look bad as a city, it makes us look bad as a, as a host for business, and it makes us look bad to those people who came and paid their fines. Why shucks, they may not want to get a ticket in Castle Hills anymore, who knows?
That's exactly what one of them said.
Sir?
No, I, Douglas laughed, that's exactly what one of them said.
Could be, I won't get a ticket here anymore. Okay, I believe that. That may not be all bad. But anyway, there, there's a lot of things behind the scenes that nobody is aware of, or that we've lost our awareness of. Among those are the fact that the city has a balanced budget, but that's a kind of a qualified balanced budget. The fact is that we owe over two million dollars to TMRS. The retirement plan is two million dollars plus in the hole, and we're like, we're likely to stay there for a while. We have twenty-three years or so to pay that off, and we're paying it off an additional sixty-five grand a year right now. In addition, we have, as has already been pointed out, millions, and it's arguable how much it is, between eleven and seventeen are numbers that I've heard for streets and drainage work combined. I've, I've heard bandied about a higher number tonight, but I don't know whether that's correct or not. There's a great deal of work that needs to be done there. While it's true that in comparison to eleven or seventeen million dollars, fifty thousand or five hundred thousand, it still looks like a drop in the bucket. But poor Richard still has the, the handle on it. If you take care of the pennies, the dollars will take care of themselves. So, you've got to handle the small stuff in order to be able to pay off the big things. So, yeah, every penny counts, and in the end, they add up to bigger money. And the bigger money is what we really need to have to be able to take care of our streets and drainage. That's about it.
Ms. Scott?
If you've been paying close enough attention to what's been going on up here since May, you know the reason for this crisis, you know the reason for the catastrophe, you know the reason behind what is going on. It doesn't need a lot of explanation, if you've been paying attention to what's going on at council meetings. So, I don't feel like I need to say a lot on that topic. If you've been paying attention, you know what's going on. Thank you very much.
Ms. McLean?
I do actually have some announcements, since we're here like today and not tomorrow, and there was nobody for announcements the last couple of meetings, which I don't blame you. I have, I have been our city's alternate delegate for the Bear County Council of Government Meetings, which is a conglomeration of all the mayors in the county. And the, the meetings are actually fascinating. Right now, we're gearing up for Census twenty twenty. We'll find out what our numbers are, how many people do we really have in Castle Hills? A major portion of the Census twenty twenty is using a strategic element of local, local-based outreach campaigns, and so they are requiring local municipalities for their twenty twenty budget to allocate some resources towards trying to be able to get accurate counts of people. So, that's something that I'm just telling council now, that next year in our budget, we need to make sure we have something in the twenty twenty budget to help with this. This is something the federal government is asking us to do, and it's required by the U.S. Constitution. Second, I, many people should know this already, that San, that Bear County is an ozone non-attainment county. The state has actually filed a lawsuit and is trying to help the county with this. But what they're doing is, we, we get background ozone, and that doesn't get taken away from our, our numbers. So, San Antonio has a climate-ready campaign. Their goal is to have it presented to their council in January twenty nineteen with an adoption by April of twenty nineteen, regarding the use of, use of bike, you know, biking and bus, zero-scape, emergency plans, and other things to address what scientists are saying that we need to address, and that is planning for higher temperatures, less rain, just some interesting shifts in, in climate, whether you believe in climate change or not. The ozone is a big deal, because that potentially affects federal funding. And so, even as a little city in the middle of San Antonio, there are things that we should be doing as council and looking at, and not rehashing things that we've been rehashing for months. The city, the county has got three years to obtain the right standard, and then we have to have a ten-year maintenance plan, and so the attainment date is September of twenty twenty-one, which will be here before we know it. Another thing is that the Alamo Area MPO will be accepting grant proposals in twenty nineteen, and this is walkability, mobility. So, the more instability we have in our government and in our city, the less likely we will be to be able to obtain grant money. And these are all amazing programs that we can use to help obtain funding for streets. One of the most fascinating things that Mrs. Scott and I learned about in October was that the Army Corps of Engineers has nineteen billion dollars to spend on flooding and drainage projects, and they are begging for proposals to be submitted. So, there are, there is money out there to help our city with some of the infrastructure needs that we have, but the more instability we create within our, the city itself, the harder... but the more instability we create within our, the city itself, the harder it's going to be for us to be able to go out and show credibility when we try to get grants, whether it's Parks and Wildlife, for the Parks Commission, for, you know, master plan product, parks that they come up with. It's going to be harder for us to get money that is, that's not coming from our residents. And so that is just a fascinating thing out there, that they have nineteen billion dollars for flooding and drainage. I thought that was a promising thing to look at, and those are all my announcements.
Ms. Winger? Douglas?
I don't know if anybody's left listening, there are just a few people in the audience. But these problems that the city faces have not just started since May. They've been ongoing and building for a long time. I hope this spring, and we don't spend another three or four thousand dollars for a useless meal, but that we sit down as a council and go over every single position in this city, and for the council to, with, in conjunction with the city manager, determine what every position needs to be done. I don't think we've, I've sat up here for seventeen years, I don't think that's ever happened. And we just sort of drift along and assume one person's doing this, and one person's doing that, and we add a person here, add a person there with no follow-up. I hope, I'll, I'll try to make a fashion of motion to bring that in the spring. Castle Hills will be here, it's just a question of whether it will be here as a sound city, of sound finances, and is ginning well, or not. And that remains to be seen, depending upon who is voting. But I wish everybody a very happy new year, and twenty nineteen, I hope it's, market was down five or six hundred points today. Hope twenty nineteen is far better than what this year has been so far, so my best to one and all.
I just had a couple of things to say. I made a statement earlier that I take a blowtorch to this place. That was an acronym that a businessman would use when the business isn't there. Okay? Obviously, I wouldn't take a blowtorch to the business, to the city, but I would say this. And when you have a city, you have a CEO, and you have, and when you have a business, you have a CEO and you have a board of directors. You're looking at your board of directors up here. CEO has no power. He has no power. All he does is oversee meetings and try to keep copacetic as things are going. Well, I've gotten to the point where I can't stay copacetic anymore. Okay, and that's why I make statements like I did. When the CEO of a company asks the leader of the company, will we be open on January the second, and he says he does not know, it's not because that he doesn't, he hasn't done his job, or he hasn't done this. If I sent that man into battle with a pop gun into Afghanistan, that's what we've done. That's what we've done, we pulled everything away from him, we've belittled him, we've done a lot of things. And they're guilty up here, the people who did, whoever did. And whether you admit it or not, that's exactly what has happened. And so I hope we're here next year. I hope that when you walk in, you'll be able to see a person up here. I had a person come up to me and say the other day that, oh, the reason people are leaving is because our insurance is bad. Please. We all know why people are leaving, because not only has the backbone of this city been broken, but the backbone of the trust has been broken. The employees do not trust the people up here making the laws. There it is. Have something to say? Somebody asked that. Skip, would you move to adjourn, please? Would you move to adjourn, please?
Hit it, but I'll move to adjourn if that's appropriate. Your happy holidays to all.